June 13th, 2024, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:00 PM and we are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station. Lake Cam is recording the meeting. Is there anyone else recording for the record? Hearing none. Agenda item number one is a public hearing for Pine Crest Village that has been continued to this date. We do have a request from the applicant for a continuance. Kathy, they didn't specify a date in this? Did you ask them about a date?
I didn't because we haven't got the peer review. So that means we would still have to send it to them, but they engineer. So I don't know if that would be ready. If you want to try the 27th.
I mean, even if they get it, they're probably going to need some more time to review it. So how about July 11th? They weren't, they didn't specify, right?
They did not specify.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion to continue to July 11th?
In a second.
Or it's to move to me?
Oh, we need to make the motion, okay. Yes, make the motion to move the, or continue the meeting on July 11th.
Okay, so.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda item number two, a public hearing for site plan review to and for Bedford Street, which has been continued to this evening. And here this evening. We also have in our packet two quotes from peer review. One of them, Environmental Partners, and another from Beals and Thomas. And did you have something you wanted to speak to?
Uh, yes, two things. I was wondering if anybody had spoke with town council?
Could you state your name and address for the record?
301 Pond Lane. Sorry about that. I was wondering if anybody spoke with town council, talking to Nate, because without their go, there's no point in getting a theory.
I did talk to zoning enforcement and he does believe that it is compliant with zoning. So this evening, I think we're just going to determine which peer review we want to move forward with.
Okay. I reviewed both of them and I'd like to go with Beals and Thomas, if it's okay with the board.
Well, it will be up to the board. And I mean, I agree because they do have a site visit that's included. I don't know if you had an opinion, David, on...
No, not particularly, no. Yeah, I mean, I reviewed both in detail and depth and I was leaning more towards the Beals and Thomas quote as well, just because it's got a little bit more depth into it, so.
Yeah, I like that they're going to perform a site visit.
Yep.
So, um, yeah. Would you like to make a motion to... Do we need to vote on this, Kathy? Do you want to vote on that peer review?
Yeah, you can vote on it.
I make a motion that we settle with the peer review for two and four Bedford Street with Beals and Thomas for the site plan review for Twin Boys LLC.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Was there anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kathy, you did, um, did town council reply to you about next meeting?
Yes.
So they'll be here with us anyways, so that's good. Okay. Agenda item number three, an A&R plan for 38 Lakeside Avenue. Richard Reed Jr., GM2 Associates, possible vote. Is anyone here for that item?
Correct.
Did you, did you have something? Did you want to speak to the last item? I'm sorry, I didn't even...
No, I don't even know what we were seeing or what was...
Were you here for the two for Bedford?
Yeah.
So we've just determined a peer review for the town that will review the engineering plans. So, sorry about that.
Can I ask one question? What's the timeframe for that?
It's dependent. So they'll, they'll do a review. They'll send it over to the applicant. The applicant will then go through the peer review items and they'll, you know, tweak their plans accordingly, send back the response, and then we'll have another round with peer review where they'll go through and, and check off whether or not it's been fulfilled.
And then go through, kind of, again?
Yes, correct. And it'll all go through this public setting, public hearing process, each step.
Will I just get letters or do we need to follow?
No, so because, so the public hearings only notice that first time. So, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have this A&R for 38 Lakeside Avenue. Is anyone here just to this? Did you, have you spoken with the applicant on this?
I mean, when, I believe it was Ms. Cabral, when she came in, I told her that usually the engineer presents the plan.
Yeah.
So she was aware of it.
Huh, okay. I did have a question, just because I, I don't see the septic and well shown on the existing lot. And I know it's saying dwelling under construction, so they must have plans, you know, something showing where the septic and well are going. And it, you know, according to our rules and regulations, it's supposed to be shown on the, in our plan. So, um, I mean, I'd like to request that be shown on.
Other thing, too, that I, that I questioned was that, uh, this lot 2A, I mean, obviously the, the area to be built on is, yeah, back where you're pointing, right, kind of right where it shows lot 2A. But they can't access it through their, through their own lot.
So it does appear that there's a small strip.
There is a small strip.
That they would be able to, that's, I do have questions about the, you know,
Yeah, I mean, it's over the, it's over the wetlands.
They do have the frontage, the area.
They have the frontage, but, you know, it just, I guess my question is, you know, are they, are they allowed to kind of access over the, over that wetlands?
Well, I guess, you know, I think they can.
I mean, you know, normally it's, you know, 50-foot buffer or 100-foot buffer.
But we're just approving an A&R, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question is, you know, can it, does it, does it meet the requirements?
Right. Well, so how about, should we ask Kathy to reach out to the applicant? Ask them if they would attend a meeting to answer some questions? And also to have the, the well and septic be shown on the plan? So we can make sure that it's not anywhere near where this lot land swap is taking place.
On the plan, they'll probably need to show the upland square footage as well, right? Or is that?
For the, for lot one?
Well, it says, it says 5.5 acres of upland area.
Right, but they are supposed to show up for lot one as well.
So, yeah, I think this needs more discussion, preferably with, you know, the owners and, yeah, so we'll have to table this.
Yeah, so do you want to, I guess we can have an action item for Kathy to reach out to the applicant? Let her know that we have some questions. We'd like it to be presented by someone representing the applicant. Also show the well and septic on the plan. And, I guess.
Probably, oh, at least two weeks out, right? Or do you want to do the, or July 11th?
Well, I don't see why it would have to wait till July 11th.
Yeah, yeah, I would say that.
So if you want to do...
So maybe reach out to them by next week and then have them back on our agenda for June 27th?
Was that our next meeting?
No. Would that give you enough time, Kathy?
I mean, I can try.
Okay.
Do you think you can reach out to them next week? By, I don't know, say, next Thursday?
Yes, I'll be in all day next Thursday.
Okay, okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number four. We have a notice of intent to lay out Gillian Drive. Possible vote for recommendation.
Are you, excuse me, are you going to continue that with the motion?
Oh, sorry, yeah, well, yes, we'll continue the.
Yeah, so move that the, uh, uh, plan for 38 Lakeside, is it 38 Lakeside Drive?
Avenue.
Avenue, yeah. Be table, table to the next meeting?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gillian Drive. We have a memo from the select board. They have reviewed the layout of Gillian Drive. They are looking to bring this to town meeting to be accepted by the town as a public way. And we also have a letter from Environmental Partners with a short punch list of items, as well as an email from our DPW director, Franklin. And he says that the final three observations on this letter have since been addressed by the developer. Based on the completion of the peer review, the DPW gives recommendation of approval for acceptance of Gillian Drive as a public way.
Excellent.
So if he's satisfied, I'm satisfied.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So would...
So the, the board, was it their last meeting that they discussed this? Or was it the meeting before?
Their May 20th meeting.
Okay, their May 20th meeting, so that's good.
That's right.
All right, excellent.
So we could send a recommendation that the planning board is satisfied?
Yep. Yeah, all the plans look good. You know, we've got all the drainage and everything. Everything just is in order for this. So I think it's another one of those things that's long overdue, so.
Yeah, Environmental Partners said, okay.
Yep.
They were... Okay, punch list items have been addressed.
Yep.
Okay.
Excellent. So make a motion?
All right.
I make a motion to approve Gil... Is it Gillian or Jillian?
Jillian.
Is it Gillian?
I think we're sending a recommendation.
A recommendation that the town approves Gillian Drive as a public way.
I have a motion?
Second.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number five, we have Stowe Estates. Anyone here for Stowe Estates?
Could state your name and address for the record, please?
Now, are these items that you submitted today?
Yes.
Okay, so we're just getting them right now. We really haven't had a chance to review them. So we do have a hard cutoff a week before the planning board meeting for some of those. So we will have to continue to review the items. I did speak with some enforcement officer regarding this and he was looking for the affidavit from the utility company and from the engineer. So is that enclosed in here?
The utility company, yes.
Okay.
The engineer, no.
Okay, so what is, so if you...
So the reason for tonight is that the proposal of the peer review came back with an extensive amount of money. And along the way, we've had the inspections from the water and the electric. So in the peer review, it states that he'll be coming back multiple times inspecting.
So that's why we were, so the peer review, because you've already gone and done the road? It's too late. So that's why we need the affidavits. So that, we need something from your engineer as well. You know, legally stating that it was done, that he was there to witness how it was done. If he wasn't there when it was done, then we're going to need core samples from the road.
Okay.
Okay. So as long as this all checks out, I think we'll probably have town council take a quick look at it.
Because I did go to the highway supervisor.
I'm sorry?
I did go to the highway department and told them that I was going to be paving the road on, I think it would have been June 2nd. And they said they had nothing to do with inspecting the, you know, the gravel prior to us putting that first top coat down. So I asked multiple times, I went to them. Nobody knew who was supposed to inspect this. And, you know, we had a plan to pave the utility.
Yeah, because the peer review had, obviously, there wasn't, you know, it wasn't completed.
But in the, in the directions, I guess, or...
The regulations.
The regulations and then the checklist here, it's only a, um, utility installation is complete and the roadway is constructed with a base coat. So it didn't say that a peer review was needed and that's why, you know, I reached out and tried to get the necessary steps to.
Now, is this an internal checklist? Yes, yes, please. So what we do now is we do have an internal checklist post approval. So all these things, items one from 10 are pulled out of the approval and these are the things that were included that have to be done, that need some type of an action. And then the other thing, the inspection notices, this is what's in your regulations. So some of these things, items obviously weren't on this checklist. And then, kind of like I was color coding it, and then this was the proposal from EP and how they correlated to the inspection notices, but they didn't correlate to the certificate of approval. So, get what I'm saying? Yeah, I know, it's a little complicated.
Right.
Trying to present it in a, you know, an understandable way.
All right. Okay. So I'd like to just, so are you going, is your engineer able to supply the affidavit?
Yeah, yes.
So when you have that, if you could get that over to Kathy?
Okay.
And then I'd like to just have town council take a quick look, make sure the affidavit looks good. And then, do you know, how long will it, will it take you to get that affidavit?
I'm sure I can get it by Monday.
Okay.
We reached out to him today, we were unable to get ahold of him, so.
Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, and then also included in that is the document for the HOA, which town council would have to review also.
Oh, there is a document here for the HOA? Okay, so once everything is given to you, do you want to get that over to town council? So that's another action item for Kathy. Sometime next week, whenever you get it, I guess, by the end of next week.
Will the affidavit replace the peer review completely? Or do they still have to do a certain portion?
I would, I would think we'd still want peer review to go out and verify what has been done, to make sure that it matches.
Yeah.
So, so there will probably be a portion.
Just for the road, the legal portion.
So I would, I would say, get what's been done, the affidavit, potentially send that to peer review to say, this is what's been done. What else needs, you know, what, what else?
So, yeah, then you would have to go through these lists and determine what you still want to have reviewed and what's already been done. So then they could revise the proposal.
Right. Okay, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know if we should go through that right here, right now? Did you have a chance to check it off?
I mean, I just did it real quick this afternoon. Of what he provided and how, how it goes on that. I don't know as far as what's, you know, items four through six. I am not sure on those items.
Yeah.
Of what still needs to be done.
There's a line, there's a line in this.
Okay.
You know, it has the loan and seeding, but you're going to be selling the lot, so you, you're not going to be doing that.
Oh, and has it gone through conservation yet?
It went through conservation when we first started.
And the plans didn't change?
Nope.
Okay, so I think that we'll have to just put it back on our next agenda. Get those items in, we'll have town council review them. And Kathy, can you just let us know if you hear back from town council? I know sometimes it can take some time, so I don't want you to come back if we haven't heard back from town council yet.
And then I would get a revised proposal from the peer review?
Correct, yeah. So we could put it on our June 27th meeting?
Yeah. June 20th or 27th?
27th.
Because we're going to need some time from legal and council for us, too.
So would somebody like to make a motion in regards to continuing till June 27th?
Okay, yeah.
Or, or when? I guess we can continue it till June 27th, depending on, you know, whether we've heard it back, heard back from town council and Kathy will just let us from the applicant know.
Is it the 20th or the 27th?
We need the second and fourth, the 27th.
Okay, all right. Because I thought we did one just a minute ago for the 20th. Okay, go. Okay, I make a motion that we can continue Stowe Acres
So Estates?
Until, uh, uh, June 27th?
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right.
See you on the 27th.
See ya, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Was there?
Do you need Lakeside?
That was...
Are you the owners?
Oh.
Okay, so you're for the A&R?
What?
For the A&R, Lakeside?
Yes.
Oh, okay, we actually, we had just continued it because nobody was here to speak to us. Did you want to come up?
Yes, please, sir.
Okay. So we will go back to...
Go back to item three?
Agenda item three, the A&R plan for 38 Lakeside. And if you could just state your name?
Craig Cabral.
And address for the record?
22 South Hillside Street, Arizona.
Okay, let me go back to work.
So we...
Okay.
So you would originally come out with a A&R?
And it was all approved?
It was approved, but now you're adding to a partial A.
We're just moving the line over a little bit, so when my, because they had it there, he's using the existing well, so the other way you'd have to drive over his well. So it would have to excavate and everything. So we're his parents, we have, we own the other lot and he owns that lot. So we're just giving him that little piece so he doesn't have to cut out so much of his, the yard and they dig it all.
So that was actually my question. So we were going to, we had asked Kathy to contact you and ask you to show where the septic and well for the dwelling here, that, so you have a dwelling under construction. So you must have an approved well.
There's a house there already.
And septic, but that's going to be raised, right?
Right, that's going to be raised.
So you have a well and septic that's associated with the house that's coming in. So if you can show, because it does, in our rules and regs, it does require that the septic and the well are shown on the A&R just so that it's not an issue where it's over that lot line.
Well, the septic will way down the bottom, they're a long way from this.
So as long as we can just show it on the plans? And then I think, David, you had had a question about...
Yeah, I had a question about, you know, you know, access to lot 2A.
That, that comes from the other side. That comes from Quail Run.
But it shows, and are, are you going to be able to access it over that, over that wetlands?
So where's Quail Run?
There's a road, it comes right, there's a driveway right there, right off Quail Run. That was all addressed already.
Yeah, but part of that road shows on...
Yeah, you have frontage on Lakeside Ave, correct? But you're saying that you're accessing it from a different road?
No. We have the other lot, the, the lot on the side. Can I come up and show you?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I see right here, this is saying Quail Run and this is Quail Run.
Right.
So...
This lot here, there's access from this street here, Quail Run here.
Okay.
This is, this is my son's lot right here.
Okay, yeah, see, I was seeing this driveway as being the access to...
No, no, that's not the, the access for this Quail Run, you come down the street and come right in over here.
Okay, all right, that answers it.
And this septic, this new house is way down here. That's where the septic is, way down here. But the well is right, was right over here, so we would have to drive over it. So we're just going to give him this little piece so he keeps the existing well and he doesn't have to dig all this out, that's all.
Okay. Yeah, so are you, can you get those added so we can see on the plans? Because you're going to file this, so that, then it's shown where it is.
It is, it should...
That's, it says to be raised and that says a shed, but I don't see...
The septic system is already in, it's right here.
Okay, but so it's not shown on the plan?
This was your subdivision plan, so you...
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's subdivision plan.
Yeah, so we'll need the, the updated plan.
On the plan?
Yeah.
Indicate it. Usually it's a little key, it has an S in the little circle.
So you just need me to have the engineer show you where this septic is right now?
Yes, correct.
And the well.
Yep, and the well, existing.
I think the well, the well does, the well should show right. That's why we had to move the property, let's see. The well is right, because this is the existing house and the well is right there.
Right, okay, so that says shed. That's the shed.
No, that's the shed. See that little dot right there?
That's his garage, that's the shed. So it should have, you know how everything has, you know, a little indicator? So if, if it could just be indicated on there.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
But other than that, did, have the questions all been?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I mean, that helps with the, the drive and everything.
Yeah, so we had, we had some questions about that.
We were like, okay, how's that going to work? So, yeah. Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll definitely need the updated plan.
Yeah, so we continued it to our next meeting.
Which is?
So June 27th.
Okay, so you just need him to draw you in the one showing the septic and the well.
Yep, just, yep, just put those little dots there, where they are, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.
Two weeks, all right.
So we don't have to redo our motion.
Well, she knows who came in, so now she'll not have to contact them and...
Just want to double check. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're still tabled to next week, or two weeks.
Okay, cool. Number six.
I apologize for being late. We went to the town hall and we went to the library. You know, it's here, June 27th, it'll be here?
Nope, it'll be at the library.
Library on the 27th?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize.
No, no worries, we'll see you then.
Okay, so we are on number six. Review the following zoning board of appeals petition. A is Shinney, 26th Pilgrim Road. And so this appears to be a residential lot where they are replacing the garage. And typically, planning board sends a recommendation of no comment for residential. Somebody would like to make a motion to send no comment? Unless you have any questions, comments, concerns?
No, no, yeah, no, I have moved that we, uh, send a no comment recommendation.
Send a no comment recommendation to the ZBA for, uh, twenty sixth Pilgrim Road.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And B, we have Tev Tevers, eight Cherry Street. And this is another residential, they are adding a structure over an existing deck. Once again, residential.
Okay.
Would someone like to make a motion to send a recommendation of no comment?
Yeah, okay, that's what this, no, that's still Pilgrim Road, wait a minute, I'm looking to see what they're. What they're talking about.
Oh, it's a.
Okay, yeah. Just hadn't gotten that. Um, yeah, okay, so make a motion that we send a, a, uh, no comment recommendation. To, uh, the ZBA for, uh, eight Cherry Street.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, C, three thirty six Bedford LLC, on three thirty six Bedford Street. Uh, this is actually an addition going in a business zone. Um. It does look like they're adding on the front portion, um. It says that the. There's no proposed changes to the setbacks or lot coverage, so.
Kathy, is this the one that's next to the town hall, Dr. Bowie's? Okay, yeah, so I mean, this, I'm familiar with the property, I mean, it's set far back, it's, you know.
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yeah, non-conforming, so, I mean, I have no, um.
So, send a.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
No comment on this one?
No comment on this one.
Okay. You in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that, um, the planning board, um, has no comment for three sixty six Bedford Street.
Actually, it's three thirty six.
Oh, oh, it said three sixty six on here. Oh.
Okay.
Okay, um, let me just double check, three thirty six Bedford Street LLC.
Alright, so we have a motion.
One second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, D, the residences at La Barron Hills LLC.
Okay.
Um, we did receive a letter that had been addressed to the zoning board from attorney Mather in regards to. Some changes that are proposed, uh, to, this is phase six of. Uh, La Barron's phases, uh, to add additional parcels of Lenoferne Ave to the comprehensive permit. To change the existing emergency only access from Fer- Fern Ave to full access to the development. Uh, to allow the construction of phase six, which will consist of three thirty six unit, four-story buildings with elevators. And to increase the total number of units from three eighty six to four nineteen. So, on the backside of the letter, um, there is a paragraph I found to be a little bit. Contradicting of itself. Uh, permit shall be deemed modified to incorporate changes, the above process does not require a public hearing. A public hearing would be required if you determine that the changes are substantial changes, and if so, and pursuant to the aforementioned. Said regulations, a public hearing is to be held within thirty days. Please note, now this is in bold, please note that the applicant concedes that the proposed changes are substantial. And waives the right to request the board to determine that chan- changes are insubstantial. So, despite the contradictory nature, um, are they, does that mean they're planning on holding a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that was my first question, because.
The statute says that when they submit something, you can just open the hearing, it, it, there isn't a hearing, you just open it, and the board would determine if they felt it was substantial or. Insubstantial, so they're conce- so they're conceding that it is substantial in eliminating that kind of wasted time.
So we'll have the public hearing held?
Yes.
Okay, properly noticed and all.
Mm-hmm.
That's good, because I know people are very, this is something that people pay attention to, so, that's good.
Yeah, they had actually presented this kind of once before, and then pulled it back. Uh, they had presented this along with, uh, thirty six units that they had proposed down in La Barron, down.
Yeah.
This way.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, I believe they are al- already starting on phase five E.
Yes.
I believe?
Yep.
Um.
Yeah.
So, these are four-story buildings, and one of them is right on Precinct Street.
Yep.
With just the parking area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, shown.
Jeez.
Towards Precinct Street, um, it 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 definitely seems out of character for that neighborhood.
Yep.
Um, you know, they have a lot of. Different sort of duplex style.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, I.
Units in there, I think, you know, my, I think we could potentially send a recommendation to, uh, consider a design change.
Mm-hmm.
Um. To some sort of a duplex or townhouse style.
Yeah, cause they're right here next to single-family homes, right?
And it, and I mean, we, you know, it doesn't.
And yeah, he's, he's right out there on on precinct with.
Right.
Kind of no landscaping.
Right, and it doesn't meet our architectural design elements or landscaping.
Yeah, I mean, I, when he presented it before, he he had, uh, uh, renderings and such of what he was talking about.
I'm sure they will, well, I would assume they would have more detailed plans eventually, but, so as far as what we're sending is comments, like.
Yeah, we're sending comments to the.
ZBA.
To the ZBA and.
Um, so.
Yeah, um, so I wrote down several things.
Okay.
So buckle up, everybody.
Alright.
Um, just very quickly, Kathy, num- item number four that we got from attorney Mather. To increase the total number of units from three eighty six to four nineteen.
Yep.
Is that the entire?
Yes.
La Barron Hills development?
Yes, so this comprehensive permit was originally approved in like two thousand and three or four, two thousand and four. And it was for that number, for three hundred and eighty six total units, so they're asking to increase that amount.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that.
And there, as as I understand it from mass housing, uh, that they're allowed increases of. A certain number, I don't know what it is.
Incremental.
Yeah, I think it's ten percent.
Kind of with, within the confines of their original comprehensive permit.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, I think this is, unfortunately, within those, within those confines.
But I think the town still has, obviously has to, you know, approve it.
Yeah.
Just a given.
Yeah, I mean, I, the 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 one thing that I, uh, I I've been concerned about with this. Project is that, uh, uh. The 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 number and distribution of the infor- affordable units.
Mm-hmm.
Throughout it, uh, because the, the forty B regulations say. Uh, that affordable units are supposed to be within all phases.
You're not supposed to be able to tell them apart, they're not supposed to just be.
Well, the the whole single-family area, which I think is seventy units.
Yep.
Not a single affordable.
Yep.
Right.
And I don't know if the town, if the ZBA approved that.
So what happened with the project is when, it was originally another developer, and the second. Part of that was the apartment building, and I think it's fifty six units, and those are all affordable.
Right.
So through the, through the permit, you're supposed to have twenty five percent at all times of the units affordable, so that brought the figure way up. And that's why they were allowed to.
Kick it down the road.
Yeah, but, you know, the the town, now, may- maybe you can fill me in on this, because I did see this in the meet, in the. Meeting minutes from, uh, years ago, was at the train station. Which was also a forty B, got caught doing the affordables in one area. And the town, uh, I think there were eight units, and the town was not credited with eight affordable units. Because they hadn't followed the regulations.
I think that was, I'm not exactly sure what, what, um. What development that was in, because some of those were forty R, so it went through the planning board.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, that, I mean, I was was running through all meeting minutes, and somebody had brought that up. Um, that the town had lost.
I I know there was some talk, I'm really not super, uh.
Yeah, so, you know, so I wondered, you know, I wondered when the apartment building got built, and they said, these are all affordable. Kind of how they could, uh, how they could get away with that, or how they, you know, were, how that was allowable.
That's, that's how it was, cause they were like at that, at that point, then above their percent.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they, they, yeah, they were.
Right, and then the developer changed, I don't think there was any building for quite a while, and, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
If the town could have negotiated that, I don't know, and said at least have some, but now, within the plan, we do have, we have the, you know. Now they're submitting where the affordable units are gonna be placed.
Yes, I, well, I noticed that on.
So I feel like now, you know, the, the zoning board's a little bit more skilled, at the beginning, maybe they weren't as knowledgeable, so. It's kind of a learning experience.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just didn't wanna see the town get penalized again.
Right.
Uh, it didn't, it didn't say what the penalty was, but, uh.
But, so Dan, what were your?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so anyhow, yeah. No, so, um, you know, based on this, uh, the good news is, uh, Fern Ave, which is, um. You know, right now, it's a construction access slash, people are using it, um, to get through. Uh, Fern Avenue, um, for those at home that are following, um, is pretty much a no outlet at this point. But it is a town road, so, um, here, drawn on the proposal. Is where we think Fern Ave does end, but it will. There, there's a portion of the, the road that technically ends, and then it becomes part of La Barron Boulevard, and then La Barron Boulevard is also. Privately owned by, um, by, uh, the development, so. The challenge is, is how, it, cause the town only goes so far in terms of owning Fern Ave, and Fern Ave, I mean. Right from Precinct Street will eventually need to be paved, but there is that portion that is, you know. Has craters in there right now, um, so. We have to figure out what the access points are for, you know, the, you know. Who's gonna own what and to what point, because it is, um, Fern Ave only goes to a certain point where it's town-owned, is was what I'm trying to say. Um, I do welcome for the development, primarily, you know, the residencies within La Barron. To have that extra access point for several reasons, one, it improves response times for fire and EMS and police. Um, which is great, cause, you know, you know, the response times are what we do need, but. If anybody has been in La Barron Boulevard, only going out country club way, that, which is a very, very bad corner there. In addition to, you know, the older side of the development over by La Barron Hills, the country club, I mean. Those are really the only two entrances that people are using, so having this as a, um. A- a- additional outlet to Precinct Street is is good, um, without just keeping it, um. You know, for emergency only, so I I definitely like that, but we do have to figure out the whole Fern Avenue, um, thing, and we'll have to probably bring in. Additional folks, um.
Yeah, so that sounds like a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you you, you know, usually, uh, from a planning standpoint, uh, you you try to avoid. Creating spots where people could cut through as a shortcut.
Right.
But, uh, uh, this is kind of such a long way, uh, around, uh, that, uh. Uh, and 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 I know that, uh, uh. The part of of La Barron that's already built, if if we had. More cars going through there at increased speeds, that, that we would throw some speed bumps down.
Right, yeah, I don't think it would be used as a cut through, honestly, because it's such a long way to get from seventy nine to precinct.
Well, you also.
You're going through the development.
You also have the rotary circle too, right there, so, and that's small, so.
Yeah.
You know, um.
So maybe as a question to ZBA to consider what sort of improvements to Fern Ave? And who will be responsible for ongoing maintenance?
Right, and and how far, yeah, so, is Fern Ave going to be extended to a Barron Boulevard and then cut off? And but still considered a town road, who maintains that?
And and potentially a traffic study, because now there's gonna be a lot more traffic dumping out onto this little road. Onto Precinct Street, is it capable of handling the extra traffic?
So, speaking about traffic, leads me into the next.
Hey, you got what, a hundred and twelve units, uh, in those three buildings there?
Hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight, okay, hundred and eight.
So, the the challenge with this, I mean, this is, this is so close to Precinct Street. You know, but there are two, um, entrances that are proposed on Fern Ave. So there's one at the beginning of Fern Ave, and then a little further down, it looks like there's another entrance. Um, towards La Barron Boulevard for the other accessory, but there's also what it appears to be another entrance where Zone A boundary is on Precinct Street. Now. That might be detrimental to have a entrance there, and the only be, reason being is for safety. Um, I do feel that, you know, Fern Ave is wide enough, this isn't, so, um. I I don't know, I mean, people do fly down that street.
Potentially, how about another recommendation to ZBA could be, um, to eliminate the Precinct Street egress?
Yes.
Yep.
For safety?
Yep. Um, the other thing I was looking at here, if this is to go in, is, um. Possibly a sidewalk.
Alright.
Um, to connect to, to La Barron Boulevard, there is a sidewalk that goes so far, I think. Right by Hybrid Drive and and down forth, but, um. There's such dense housing that's gonna go in here, now, you're talking about a hundred and eight units, and however many people will be. In this area, kids, so forth, that's another safety issue, um, so. The developer ha- might wanna look into possibly a sidewalk or somewhere where it's safe to walk, because people are gonna, there's gonna be a lot of traffic here.
Right, so recommend, is zoning board consider requesting sidewalks?
There was, in the original approval for this comprehensive permit, an agreement to build a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
But it was to the COA.
All the, all the way down to, yeah, to.
Council on ADR.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
But that went away and the.
But that went away, that got, that got negotiated out.
Right.
And.
But we ended up getting a DPW building out of it, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um. But, yeah, I, you know, one, one of the, I guess, one of the other recommendations, I don't, are we, we writing these down now?
Uh, yes, I I've written them down, um, there's a few others, so.
Okay, yeah.
Um. For my fellow board members, how long does a special permit give for completion?
Right, good question.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
I made a comprehensive permit.
Comprehensive, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, is, Kathy, are you aware of any timeframe that's been given to this development for completion, no? Just indefinite, so potentially ask the ZBA, like, have they considered adding a timeframe, cause I know there's certain timeframes that are. Expected for completion for, you know, planning board.
Yeah. Um, attorney Mather also mentioned in here about, please note, the applicant concedes that the proposed. Changes are substantial and waives the right to request the board determine that the changes are insubstantial.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if this, you know, by reading this, I I do deem this as significant, so.
Absolutely.
Does everyone?
Yeah, I think, I think pretty much everybody agrees on that.
I mean, yeah, so, I I think we need to bring that up too, um, that, you know, this, this is substantial, so.
I think they are agreeing, you know, I think Kathy confirmed they're agreeing, and that's why they, they are going to properly notice, which is good, so that, that means they'll notify a butters. Does that mean everybody in the development gets a notice?
Yes.
Very good.
Well, okay. Um. Kathy, I don't know if you would know this, and I just wrote this down too, do we know where the financial reports stand on this project? Do we know anything? No, so that that would probably be another thing we wanna know.
So forty B developments, they're supposed to have. A cap to profit, twenty percent.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, I think it was seventeen point five, but.
Right, so I think this project had a different cap at seventeen percent, and if.
Yeah.
If they're waiting until it's completed and here we are twenty some odd years later.
There there was, again, in in my going back and reading, uh, some of some of the old. ZBA minute meeting minutes. Uh, they kind of all of a sudden, kind of, I don't wanna say drop the requirement, but they were being. Audited by an outside auditor.
Yeah.
And they dropped, they dropped that.
Who did?
The ZBA did.
Um, I don't.
They kind of negotiated that away.
I don't think they dropped it, I just don't think they've requested it.
Huh, so maybe just as a reminder to ZBA or a question to ZBA, where does the current financial reports stand? Cuz the town is supposed to be, anything over that seventeen percent would go back to the town.
Yep.
Yep.
So that that's.
Could use that.
Is that something that, you know, would be nice to know?
Uh, I threw in here the traffic study.
Yep.
Um.
I have that too.
Also have a question if there is going to be public hearing, which we know, thank you Kathy, um. Yeah, I mean, those are some of the main ones, but again. This type of development, that's gonna be a challenge, big challenge here. It does not fit that neighborhood at all.
Absolutely.
I don't know if it. It gave you a a account, but it's a it's a mix of one, two and three bedroom units.
They do require.
Again, there are some three bedroom units in there, so, you know, they they.
It's a lot of.
You can expect that there will be kids.
So.
As as part of it.
And and just, I mean. Driving up Main Street now, you know, with the the three story, now this is a four story.
Yeah.
So right on Precinct Street where there's a lot of, you know, I don't wanna say smaller homes, but they're not gigantic and we have. We have a limit of thirty five feet.
Yeah.
Tall, so um.
And. If you look at these plans and look at how close this building's gonna be to Precinct Street. Very, very close.
Very close.
Practically on Abbey Street, which I believe Abbey Street's, it might be a dirt road, I don't recall, I don't know if that's a private street. There, cuz there's a lot of cottages over there.
Which one are you, Abbey?
Abbey, I can't re- I can't recall, I know that there's several. Um. Um, over there, but either way, I mean, it's. It's gonna be in these people's backyards, front yards, so.
Yeah, I wanna say Abbey Street's not a paved street, I've driven back there.
Yeah. Um.
Um. So do we have a list now of items that we're sending?
Yeah, so, oh, yeah, back to that.
Well, and and the other thing too, uh, and again, just kind of not running any any calculations on this, but. That's a lot of lot coverage too, and you look at the how much. Coverage the parking lot has and the buildings, you got. Nothing left for any any sort of greenery.
Right, so I I think I'd wanna start with, you know. Planning Board is concerned that this does not meet the character of the neighborhood.
Yep.
Um, and would request ZBA consider. Um. Asking the applicant to. Uh, change the design as well as, you know, the architectural elements and. Um.
Yep.
As well as the plantings.
Yep.
And um.
More in character with what's been.
Yeah.
What's been built.
Right, more, yes, exactly, more in character with what's been built. Um.
Yep.
And then.
Yeah, so I have that, um.
The Fern Ave?
Fern Ave, uh, special permit, uh, given to completion. What's the other one?
Well, so for Fern, so I know we talked about, so. Uh, consider the access through Fern Fern Ave as well as the traffic study.
Yep.
Uh. What sort of improvements would be required as well as sidewalks? Unless you wanna have sidewalks as its own.
Yeah, um.
Are you are you kinda jotting these down, Kathy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Do you wanna just combine the sidewalks or sidewalk separate? Consider adding, you know, requesting sidewalks to connect to.
I think it's gotta be a requirement, if if people are gonna be going up and down, I mean.
So do it on its own, the sidewalks?
And and the only reason being is because if. My preference would be. Remove one of the buildings and kind of consolidate it, maybe move it, spread it out a little bit. So that it isn't so dense, but if you, if there's gonna be density here, you're gonna have to. You know, make it safe because there's, there's no age restrictions here from what I can see. Um, or anything to that effect, so. There is elevators though, so.
Gonna need them.
Yep.
Um, so then we have the traffic study to be peer reviewed, which I'm assuming they would probably do that anyways, but maybe just a, you know, recommendation. Can't hurt.
Yeah.
Um.
Preferably when school's not out.
Uh, how long? Uh, for the completion of this?
Yeah, how long for completion?
You know, what is the timeframe? Given for the completion of this project? And then, uh, the other question about, um, has the developer submitted the financial, any final financial reports to date?
Yep.
And is that everything?
I think so, um. So. What I'd like to do is draft up something for, um, the ZBA and.
Well, I think, so Kathy has been taking the notes, do you wanna just?
Yeah.
Do you wanna do it or?
You wanna, why don't you draft something up and send it around?
Okay, yeah.
Uh, I need it for tomorrow.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, cuz I'm doing their packets tomorrow.
You need it for tomorrow, okay.
Are you able to get it done by then?
I'll give it to you tomorrow morning.
Sorry.
No, it's fine, no, it's fine, um, while it's still fresh, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, so I can definitely do that, I'll send this to you folks in the morning and then we can kinda, you know. Hopefully, Jack and John are able to to, um, review too if they can't, you know, I'll just say by, um. Tomorrow at noon, you know, cuz.
Okay.
Kathy's gonna.
Well, actually, noon is when you.
Or you need that earlier than that.
Yeah, like by eleven.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you here?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So Dan will send out the draft.
Yep.
We'll have to keep an eye out on our email, and if you don't see a response from anybody, just go forward with it then, because at least, you know, he's made. Everybody wear and.
Yeah.
I know we've discussed these items, so.
Yeah.
All right. So we will be sending. That recommendation to the zoning board, uh, per those comments discussed, Dan's gonna be. Writing that up and getting that out by eleven tomorrow, uh, do we wanna make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, um.
I I move that, uh, uh, Dan. Write up our recommendations as we have discussed here. And distribute them to everybody for comment so that we can. Publish by.
Well, we can't, not not open meeting law violation.
Okay, uh. Yeah, so how do we do this without?
So he can just send it as an informational.
As an FYI, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so.
So how 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 we say the, uh, motion then?
So Dan will compose and. Email the.
Email the board.
Of the.
Yeah.
Recommendation, okay.
As an FYI and then, uh, get it over to Jack.
All right, so we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. Number seven, planning board goals. So I did notice that, so I I created an another sheet. But it didn't print, so maybe it's not a good idea to keep it on another sheet and I'll just move the items that have already kind of been put in place. Below it, so it's not on this separate separate sheet. Um, I don't really wanna go through these one by one right now, um. But number eight, which is the rules and regulations, um. We've got a. Draft so far, Kathy, have you been able to put anything together for? The internal process, no, okay, and.
I really won't have a chance to do that.
All right.
For. Probably a couple of weeks.
Okay, so I mean, I guess we can. So so my hope is that we move forward and we can hold a public hearing, I'd like to see it held on July twenty fifth. I'm thinking that gives enough time for Town Council to review and send back comments and then we can make edits. But so this is like the first sort of step, because we've also submitted for that grant. Through the One Stop.
Mm-hmm.
And considering this is the only grant that the town has applied for through One Stop, I'm hoping that we get it, so that that second step. Would be have a complete engineer review of the planning board rules and regulate regulations, we'll come up with that tiered. Accepted road versus not accepted roads, so we have a clear defined way that something like. Stowe Estates will have to follow versus.
Right, they'll have the template.
And they, and so they won't need all these waivers, so it won't be a matter of all those waivers because it's not gonna be accepted and then. Questioning, well, what has to still be done? Um, so that is the second step, so I guess. At that point, we could incorporate any additional changes if, you know, Kathy isn't able to make those changes in time.
Yep.
But unless you think you have, you know, time between when Town Council reviews it and, um. Yeah.
Between everything that's going on and I have to take this time, so.
Um. So can you, so if if we were to hold it on July twenty fifth. So then it would have to be noticed by what, the eleventh? July eleventh, does that, is that doable?
So it would have to, if you wanted to have a hearing, it would have to go in the paper, the eighteenth and the eleventh. So it would have to be noticed. I'm not sh- sure if the deadlines are gonna change because of the holiday.
Oh.
Paper.
Okay, um, I mean, we could always move it out to, I guess, August eighth.
Okay.
August eighth, giving more time with the holiday?
Yeah.
Okay. So eight, eight, twenty four, public hearing. And it would have to be noticed by. The twenty fifth, July twenty fifth?
So it would be the first and the twenty fifth.
Yep. So. That gives you enough time, okay, so.
So this is still in dra- sorry, um, no, I'm sorry, is this still in draft state?
So we went through all those edits together, I made those edits. And I sent it over to Nate and I said, you know, can can you review and then let's get this over to Town Council? To review, so. Um, I can check back with him, see if Town Council's had a chance to review, cuz there's all those different forms too, I just wanna make sure they're all. There and not missing, missing anything, um, but so if someone would like to make a motion. To schedule this public hearing. For the revised planning board rules and regulations on August eighth?
Yes, uh, I make a motion that we, um. Schedule a meeting on August eighth for, uh, the planning goal, planning board goals.
Rules and regulations.
And rules, sorry, rules and regulations.
All right, so we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Was there anything else on this goals that you wanted to talk about or are we good with this? All right, so. Number eight, we have some information regarding a consulting firm, Platinum Partners. So this was recommended by our former planning board member Barbara Mankowski. Um. It's actually two individuals, the principal is Barry Crimmins and he is an attorney with. Over thirty years' experience in areas of real estate law, land use planning and development and municipal plant permitting. Um, and the other principal, Norine O'Toole. Who's a veteran planner with over thirty years of experience in the public sector, as well as being an urban development professional with experience in state and local government. So I spoke with her and she she's definitely worked with other towns like Lakeville, um. Gosh, I wanna say with either Hanson or Hanover, another town that doesn't have town water or sewer, so that's good, that's key. Um, someone with that familiar, familiar. Familiarity, yeah, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, and then she did send over this afternoon and I did circulate it. Once I saw it, um, so we do have. The fees associated. And, um, so the. Hourly rate for a senior planner is two hundred dollars per hour, the attorney is three hundred fifty per hour. Flat fees for well-defined projects, a flat fee might be negotiated. The fee could range from five thousand to thirty thousand depending on the scale of the project. Project base fees are large-scale projects such as a zoning recodification, which would cost anywhere. From forty thousand depending on the complexity and scale. And there is a retainer basis, if the municipality would like to retain our services on a monthly basis for advisory purposes. The retainer can range from two thousand to five thousand per month. Now asterisk at the bottom, it says the proposed rates are negotiable depending on the nature and scope of the matter. So.
Okay.
That. Seems to be. I wanna say reasonable.
Yeah, it's in alignment with what we've been discussing, um, for.
The budget.
The budget and so forth, um, you know, these folks seem pretty reputable.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And it would be great to have an attorney that can review items too.
Um.
Yeah, I'm thinking about, was it Pilgrim? Way with their, uh.
Oh, Pinecrest Village, is that it?
The 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 one where they, uh, are accessing somebody else's road.
Yes, yeah.
And wanna require the the HOA to upgrade the road and just kinda wait a minute now, you know?
Exactly, yeah, I mean, it, this would definitely help, I think it's worth the investment. And. You know, um. It'd be good to see who they work with at, um, either Hanson or whatever town, just to kinda see, you know, get their feedback. Um.
Oh, you mean reach out to the other town as well? That's a good idea.
You know, just to see if. Other than that, I mean, I think that's in alignment with what this board has been, um, discussing, you know? And it's a necessity, so to kinda help out.
I'll give them a call if you if you. Wanna offload some of some of your load.
You wanna, you mean, you wanna.
I'll call Hanson.
Hanson?
Was it Hanson or was it?
So I brought it down, I don't know, I'd have to look through my notes cuz I don't. Remember specifically, I was gonna see if it said it on the website, the other towns they work with, it may not.
Yeah, they if their, uh, their little brochure here doesn't.
No.
Doesn't give any of that.
I'm not seeing it under the public sector, I'll I'll check my notes and I will let you know and if you wanna make a follow of it, that's.
Yeah, just send me a note.
Perfect. All right, so we'll have David reach out to. To, I wanna say it's Hanson, but it may not be, maybe Hanover, but I'll verify. And. So for the, it kind of is in line with, um.
Budget.
Agenda item number nine with the budget. Uh agenda item number nine with the budget, so. We, and and obviously we don't have a full board tonight, so if we wanna bring this back to our next meeting, have further discussion.
Yeah.
How the.
I think that would be good.
Gentlemen.
So we'll continue that.
Okay, um as well as the. And Kathy, do you wanna combine those, like the consulting slash planning board budget, so we just have the one item on the next meeting? Um. And we can bring that back. For further discussion on June twenty seventh?
Sounds good.
Okay. Um. All right, so number ten. Current zoning versus use map.
Yes.
All right, Dan, you take this one.
I'm on the, on the platform, okay, so um last week I did a um. A drive through um the southern end of town, um and I believe, yeah, it is here, so. Um. The purpose of this was just to, you know, make sure that, you know, our current business zoning and residential zoning is still um in check. Um and, you know, it was it was kinda interesting um going through, um. There was a few things that um piqued my interest, um primarily um some zones that were business zoned, of which were um. Residential homes, um that didn't seem like they had any sort of markings or any signage or anything like that that would um. Say that it was uh an actual business, so, you know, and and I'm not saying like a local accountant or anything like that, I mean it. But there was, there was nothing and and again, you know, I'm I'm also looking for like any types of, you know, industrial vehicles or anything like that, so. Um just to kinda go through the list, I started in the southeast corner of town, um east of Long Pond, um so. You know, I started off with um where the auto sales were in T L Edwards, just to kinda give you like a a reference point. Um and, you know, those areas looked okay, uh there were a couple areas here, I'm trying to see which. Uh along eighteen, so there were a couple areas here that, you know, I could not confirm if they were a business, um because, you know, they were. They looked like just regular homes, so I think um what would be helpful is um. As I was going through this list too, is to figure out what these uh what the number of the address is, so that I can kinda. Confirm, you know, how it, who owns it and so forth, um just to kinda give a a reference, um so we can mark it down. Um on the southwest corner of town, west of Long Pond, so this is the Free Town Street area, um everything looked. You know, very normal um over there, so you've got um. You know, uh Country Lake Plaza, which includes um Fat Cousins, Kids Echo, you got Beaver Woods over there, so they've got their businesses in the back. But on the other end of the street, um. There are some residential homes there that look like they are zone business. But um there really doesn't look like there's businesses there, although there there is a, uh it looks like an industrial garage or something over there, so. Um so I marked that down on the map as well, um that that needs to, that section. Definitely needs to be looked into on the other end of the Free Town Street area. Um and then one forty south heading towards Rochester, so again, this is um. You know, this is another area of town, Lakeville Eagles, J J Seafood, you know, those all look um. Obviously like businesses, but there were also a few homes which looked like they were included in the business district as well. Um one of which, there there is a Cranberry Bog if you're heading towards, you know, the Lakeville side of town. Um which I'd probably consider business.
Well, so I look, I saw your note there and I was just looking through our our, you know, use chart.
Yeah.
And so I'm assuming it falls under farm, garden, greenhouse, which is, you can put it anywhere, residential business, industrial or industrial B, so. So that's.
Yeah.
But. Maybe Lakeville would benefit from an agricultural zone.
Mm-hmm.
That something like that, if they're looking to maintain their farm and.
Yeah, we would do.
And look into an agricultural zone and and look to have their property zoned as agricultural, maybe that's something down the line, I know.
Yep.
You know, maybe separate from this, but just to consider eventually.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Yeah, I mean, it it's, yeah, definitely that, um there are some other things. You know, as we were, I was going through this, that I was wondering, you know. And we would have to probably work on pulling the, uh you know, the number addresses and so forth of the ones that. Appear to be business zoned, um and just kinda confirm with the owners. You know, at some point, are these actually actually businesses, you know, do you have a business that you're running out of here and um. I don't know.
Yeah, you might have some people that are a little hesitant to.
Yeah.
Answer some of those.
So I wonder, I wonder if if it's just a matter of. Sending a letter and inviting them to a meeting and just saying, you know, if you'd like to discuss.
Yep.
The zoning of your property.
Yeah.
Would be, we're interested in.
Mm-hmm.
In hearing your thoughts on on the current zonings, if, you know, if we could.
Um again, I'm pulling, I'm the newest member of the board, but as I was going through it, I mean, there's. Residential, 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 and then there's this one little plot plan which has a house on it. That is marked business and then it's, you know, the rest is all residential, it it just, I don't know, it. We just wanna make sure that, you know, everything is.
Somebody did something once upon a time to.
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I mean, so maybe, maybe they like that it's own business and in the future they wanna. Change the use if they sell, but maybe they would rather. You know, not be zone business and they're they'd be looking as well as some neighbors, you know, so that it's not spot zoning, obviously, I don't think it would be spot zoning. Cuz we have so much residential zone anyways to to, you know, potentially rezone some areas that. So that people who are moving into a home, who think, okay, this is a residential area, won't be surprised when. A business pops up next to them.
Exactly, so I mean.
Or maybe, maybe a new mixes use zone area, if there's some business in residential uses and people like that and.
Yep.
And they wanna.
Yeah.
Maintain that flexibility, maybe we could consider a mixed use zone too, so.
Right.
I think. If we can maybe continue going through the town.
Mm-hmm.
And like you did, how you have these different areas marked off.
Yep.
So maybe we can go through the whole town, get a list of areas where we wanna investigate further.
Mm-hmm.
And then potentially send out some letters, request, you know, invite them to meetings if they're interested. Maybe we won't get anybody interested, maybe maybe this will fall flat because no one will be interested and we don't wanna rezone anybody's property without their input, so.
I mean, the audit's good to do just to make sure that, you know, we're, everything's relevant, I mean, I don't know when this map was done last.
Um I I believe there was a date on it.
Oh.
I think, but it's not.
But, I mean.
Kathy, do you know how old the zoning map is, is it twenty eighteen? Okay.
So was. When this was done in twenty eighteen, was it similar, you know, people drove around, just verified or? Or was it?
Don't think it went by the zoning, whatever it was approved like in the zoning for the zones.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cuz there's spot zoning, you know.
Right, there are those few weird little business zones.
I mean, the majority on this map is is relevant, it 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 was just kinda, you know. This part, the southern part of town, it's just, you know, you got these little tiny plots and, you know. You got these random ones and then you go there and you're like, there's nothing here, you know, the house.
Well, then, and even this big purple, that's industrial.
Yeah.
Which I think.
On the Free Town side, yeah.
You know, that's a farm.
Yep.
So.
Yep. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, something to continue, cuz everybody's still looking too, but I mean.
Yeah.
I, yeah, this will definitely be an ongoing.
So maybe just pick another section and try to work on that next, one of the northern sections?
So I think Jack was working on.
I think he was looking at this same sort of area, so he might have something else to compare to your notes as well.
Yeah, Jack had mentioned he was gonna do up by um.
I thought it was down.
His area too.
Yeah.
But we'll, yeah.
But so, I mean, I think he has something to report, he's just not here at this meeting, so we'll we'll get that information from him.
Yep.
And then, well, before you put it away.
Yeah.
So then the next area, I guess, would be um. So you've basically done this and this, right?
So it's anything.
North of.
Where um Assawam's at Pond is.
Okay, so we, so potentially like anything. East of Route eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe everything west of Route eighteen?
Yep.
Up to one forty?
Yep. That sounds good.
Okay, so when we have a chance. So try to take on one of those.
Yeah.
Other areas as well.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Our next meeting or should we push it off till a month from now?
I would push it off, just because we've got a lot of.
We get a lot from them.
Lot of things coming on, but at least this kinda starts the process.
So that puts us on, I think it was what, eight, eight?
Yeah, so let's, yeah, let me uh. You know, make a note to do um for the eight, eight meeting.
All right, I don't think we need a vote, but Kathy, could we put that back on August eighth meeting? And we have a set of minutes in here, has.
Yep.
Anyone had a chance to review these minutes?
Yep, I ran through them, I didn't see any. I didn't see any issues.
I didn't either.
Nope, um I ran through it, I thought there was something, I was like.
Is there something?
Nope, everything's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Uh move that we approved minutes uh. Uh is published for April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four.
All right.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our next meeting is June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Oh, it actually says a police station. But it's at the library, right?
Library, it said.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it is at the library. I must have not grabbed that one. Okay, so June twenty seventh at the library.
Yep, sounds good.
I'm saying that for my own benefit, so I remember, so, all right, any other business?
We moved.
What's that?
Why did we get moved?
Oh, so that, um cuz we have um some submittals from Rhino Capital, so we wanted to have more space.
Okay.
For more attendees.
To go with that, um I heard from the attorney today and he would like to know if we can already start the peer review process.
Their attorney?
Yes, if we can get that going, cuz instead of waiting till the meeting.
Right, so, yeah, I don't see why we can't reach out to Environmental Partners and Bales and Thomas, maybe.
Yeah, he just wanted to make sure the board would be okay with doing that.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't see any problem in getting, like we did today, have the options to review.
Yeah.
For that next meeting. Right?
Yeah, I appreciate they reached out, sounds good.
Yep. Was there anything else?
No.
Well, if we have no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting at eight twenty four P M.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.